Six o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor and pleasure to call this meeting order. First order of the item is the stretch of allegiance. Please stand, I will lead you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be beat it. Communications and review of the agenda?
Uh, thank you Chair Johnson. We haven't had any additions to the agenda. I did have a couple items for communication. I'll try to make them quick tonight. Uh, the first one is, um, I do wanna publicly thank the board and just acknowledge that, uh, the incident on Tuesday that we had, um, was, uh, scary, well taken, you know, well handled by our staff. Our kids did great. Want to thank our law enforcement, first responders. And I want to thank the board because what we saw at that, um, we were reminded of Tuesday, what I was reminded of is when you have a strategic plan that's based on care and support for kids and investments that go that way. Um, we saw, uh, the realization of the board's hopes that we would have things in place to care for our kids. And that was really evident on Tuesday, the way our staff cared for kids, um, the way our kids were cared for. Um, we are debriefing that situation. I think there's a lot we can learn from that situation. I think we had, um, there's, uh, things that went really well and there are things that I think we can find improvements on, but I just want to thank the board for their support over the last several years to make sure we have everything from those emergency buckets to communications people and safety people that could address it in something like we saw on Tuesday. Um, I also, uh, just, um, wanna thank the board for, uh, the weather. So it's been a wonky week with the weather and thanks for your flexibility. We have tried our best to make the right call. We're out in the mornings early at four in the clock in the morning, driving the roads and things. And Wednesday, it was kind of providence that we did close Wednesday because I received messages from several staff members that said, I actually needed that day after Tuesday to unpack things before I talk to kids Tuesday, uh, you know, on today, Thursday. Um, but we're, we're, we're doing our best with that. It's been a interesting time, uh, there and and just on that same note with the weather, we do have freezing temperatures in the forecast for tonight at eight o'clock. And so just, we're gonna try to speed through this to the best we can. We'll, we'll get where we need to get, but, um, I I feel responsible to get everyone home safely tonight. And so, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving forward, um, first item on the agenda, item number one to amend the resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, twelve. Call of the election measure, we need to put that in Tides presentation.
Yeah, so, um, you, you have, uh, before you, um, uh, the amended resolution and essentially, uh, thank you for your unanimous vote to move forward with the bond in May. And that was the first step. And this ballot title is a reflection of, and the companion piece for us to file for the bond, we need a board approved, um, ballot title and the ballot title you see before you, uh, reflects, uh, your conversations over the last many months. And also, uh, the resolution you passed last board meeting, and I would, uh, ask for the board's approval on that.
I will entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution during the ballot regular election somewhere. Second, second, during the discussion. In order discussions, although the president say I, I propose, but the record show is none. Let me share that this bond measure is needs all the effort we can to be successful. And we'd like to have some of our more veteran board members, uh, maybe kick it up another notch, like maybe Director Cotton to help with them. And some of our newer board members on board to get this bond merger task. We need to put all of our everything, energy into that. Thank you very much. Second item on the agenda is the recommendation for employment for new high school principal.
Thank you. Um, actually tonight, we have, uh, on the big screen here, Dave Vickery. Um, welcome, Dave. Um, as you, as the board knows, um, and I want to thank several people, Robert particularly, and, um, our central office staff, our staff at the high school, our kids who've been involved in this. Um, the culmination, um, we did, uh, uh, have a really, um, good process, uh, with staff to uh, go through a, a vetting process and, and, um, we're excited for Dave to join us and uh, tonight I'm here to ask for a recommendation, um, to officially, um, approve Dave as high school principal at Roseburg High School and, um, turn that back with the board, make that approval.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of our superintendent to hand this day victory. As person of Roseburg High School for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? Are there any question for the superintendent?
I have not had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Vickery, but, um, I did speak to several teachers who did. And they were very enthusiastic about meeting with him, discussing with him and, um, I, I guess he started out in special education and, and there, there was, uh, teachers aren't always unanimous on things. And the teachers I talked to were unanimous, unanimous, very enthusiastic and, and very unanimous in their opinion. Thank you.
Sorry, long week for all of us.
I'm tired.
Yeah. No, thank you. And me, uh, we're excited. I, I appreciate, um, it's a, it's a great hire. I mean, Dr. Webber is leaving that building and in such a great place. So many great things happening there. And it's a great opportunity for Dave to come in and continue with that. And I, again, um, you know, grateful for the board's, um, uh, approval of this and that, and, um, and, and we're excited for, for what Dave can do moving forward.
I have something just quickly, um. Jill, we'll get it another time. But thank you, but, um, I hope the new superintendent realizes he has big shoes to fill. And you wear high heels. So I'm not sure he's gonna, how that's gonna work, but, uh, I'm sure he else, he's gonna do great.
Dave, don't panic. I think, I think Director Cotton, a new principal, not superintendent. I kinda wondered about, like, wow, this is moving really quickly and this is.
Any opposed? The record showed there was the unanimous vote. On behalf of the board and the community of Roseburg, welcome home, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is portion of the meeting. You're going to have a brief, um, this part of the change hat. Move directly into our next work session. Not exactly. More discussion. The first up, we're gonna have a, um, Phoenix school check in. And we're great, we have app and we'd like to be up to find the gentleman.
Thank you, everybody, for, uh, having me here this evening and continuing to learn and share about our students and Phoenix. Uh, I will first, uh, be, uh, presenting to you all and then actually, uh, Principal Kat Birkins, she lives in Bay Street. She went home and she gone. No, it might have to do something for you to be in the show. But I will, uh, start us off, uh, next slide. Um, so again, just, uh, I kept the PowerPoint the same just for continuity for the five-year contract here, and I will go through this briefly because I know you're all familiar with this. Presentation. So I'm just gonna be based on, uh, the reviewing the contract, next slide. Um, some important notes about last school year as we've been, uh, talking about as a district, um, here in COVID recovery concerns. Um, we have students who have low learning skill sets and low social emotional abilities among students in this last school year. Um, the data shows that while two hundred and eighty-six enrolled only two hundred and sixty-eight attended for two weeks. Um, you can see the, the totals per grade there. Um, the, the point of note is we did have an increase in high school success totals for the community and some more individuals leaving Phoenix than the prior year. Ready for, uh, success for the next phase of their life. Next slide please. Again, just an element in the contract to, to make sure that that is, uh, uh, we seen, uh, there is the comparable school mechanisms for the academic objectives. Um, there was some name changes among the schools, Plonit High School is a new name, Westland Charter Schools a new name, Verban Community Schools a new name, but those are the same institutions. The data comes from the same school ID, the same location, et cetera. Next slide please. Again, here is the language directly removed from the contract. And so we're at standard A and this one is centers on appendix. Next slide, thanks. So for goal one, you can see an increase, uh, during, uh, the return year, but, uh, not back to pre-pandemic levels or forward growth at this point in the contract. Next slide. You can see that among the comparable schools, we are seeing that statewide data showing a trend of students with, uh, similar population, uh, struggling post pandemic and the median shrink. So, uh, we're on the next slide now, um, but as per the contract language for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we need standard. Uh, thank you, Michelle, for keeping me moving right along. Uh, standard B is, uh, the four-year, uh, theater rate. Uh, next slide, no, thank you. Uh, you can see we have, uh, an increase from the prior to the pandemic and overall a positive, uh, trend line. And I do want to remind folks that a completer is, uh, a standard diploma, a GBD or a modified diploma. The contract focuses on completed rate, not grad rate for the charter. Next slide please. Um, you can see here, the data shows, uh, the charter was higher than the median of the comparable schools. Um, but, uh, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that that wasn't necessary. Uh, because we had an increase five to 10 percentage points from the prior year, according to the contract, we need standard for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. Uh, next slide please. So now we're on to five-year is standard C, five-year completer. Next slide please. You know, again, see a positive trend line overall. Um, so the eighteen, nineteen is prior to the contract, nineteen, twenty is the start of the contract. And so with the five-year, we now have exceeded the previous prior to the contract. Um, you also can see some data about what are the type and makeup of the eighty-one students that are assessed for that fifteen percent, you know, sixteen of them are considered homeless by ODB. Seventy-five percent economically disadvantaged with their children with disabilities. Next slide please. So you can see the, the median is falling, but not significantly in the state, um, and Phoenix is, uh, getting closer to its median with its peers for the five-year leader. Next slide please. You will show as per the contract related language, we, uh, increased the five-year completed rate, one to four percentage points, and therefore we are considered to meet standard from twenty-one. One, twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty, twenty-one students. Next slide please. So now we move to performance D, and these are very much, um, centered in resident testing of the students. We, as per the contract, we have to do a pre-assessment of the students and a post-assessment of the students in the school year. Um, and we asked to meet standard, we have to show fifty percent of the students showing grade level growth of one grade level in the, in the assessment tool. We use the star three, three sixty-two at this time. Next slide. You will see that we did not show growth, um, in, in English Language Arts of the eighty-nine students who did get a pre and post test. So, um, under, uh, Principal Osborne, um, we were able to achieve eighty-nine students pre and post. Um, Principal Birkins will be presenting how she already has three figures of students pre-tested this year. She's already implementing a uh, mid-year testing assessment to, to make sure we're putting kids in the right classes. But as per the contractual agreement and the number of students showing demonstrated growth, you do not meet standard for this thing. Next slide please. This is the last standard. This is, it's basically the same as one prior, but this is for mathematics. Next slide. We did show growth, but we did not show enough growth to, uh, be considered a mean standard for the contract. Again, eighty-nine students were pre-tested and post-tested. Um, for the, uh, for the, for the contract, uh, to, to, to be, um, excuse me, to be considered, uh, showcasing whether we need the standard or not. They have to be tested to pre and post to, to be considered towards the contract. Um, next slide. I'll take this one and then we'll hopefully shift to Kat and she's got a bunch of slides telling you the story of connecting with that. Um, but again, these are some things that are in the school data, uh, report card, and I was, I was proud to see the ninth grade return to, uh, uh, on track level better than prior to the pandemic. And you will see that our, at least we are holding strong with our four-year grad rate and not decreasing. Um, next slide and hopefully Kat can now start her part of the presentation.
Great. All right. So I will go through these slides rather quickly as well. The last time that I presented, I, uh, gave you a lot more information. So um, we will have time if you guys have some questions for us, but looking ahead, we're focusing on getting our students seated in the correct educational pathway as early as we can. They're also focusing on rebuilding class cohorts. So that we can address the unique needs of each grade level and how COVID may have impact and may have affected their ability to be successful high school learners as we're noticing that, um, there's different needs for our ninth grade cohorts and tenth grade cohorts based on, um, them missing some of their academic, um, content during the COVID time. Uh, another growth area we're working on is, um, starting their pathway, planning early with students and parents using progress data to drive decisions early so that it can have the most impact. So we're, uh, making sure that we're getting kids on track for where they want to be and making sure that they have the right, um, courses assigned to them. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, we're also increasing our progress monitoring frequency, um, to three times a year instead of just twice. And we are up to eighty-two percent of our student population tested. And now we're going through our second, um, progress monitoring testing right now. And we're hoping to get between eighty-two percent and ninety-five percent of the students tested, um, during this trimester. And then we'll test again at the end of the school year. Um, we're also working on increasing the number of intervention courses, course offerings and making adjustments if we see there are students that are not making progress. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So, um, we're using the progress monitoring data from each, um, each trimester also to drive the decisions that we're making on our courses for the next trimester. So if we need more intervention courses, we're able to do that. Um, we did notice that amongst the ninth and tenth graders, as, as I mentioned before, that they had some deficiencies based on, um, academic needs that we're seeing in math and ELA. So we're expanding the number of intervention courses. And that pretty much sums it up. Uh, do you guys have any questions for us?
We have any questions?
Uh, how, how are you able to expand the number of classes or whatever you were just saying, to, to, to address all these different deficiencies with it without, without more people?
That's a very good question. So we have, um, what's, what's really nice is we have a sped program. That's also, she, Sharon is also teaching one class outside of her sped. Um, we're doing foundation courses for math and then we also have, um, courses to kind of shore up their algebra. So a pre-algebra course. Um, although it is an elective for students to take that, when we see that they're deficient in their algebra skills, we can have them take that course. And then the next year they can take the algebra and get them caught up later as well. Um, it's been a struggle since we don't have a lot of teachers, but we're trying to be creative on how, um, how many different offerings we have. So we have an English foundations course and math foundations course. Um, and we have a consumer math, practical math, um, algebra and geometry. So we're really trying to just make a variety of options for the students and get them fit into the right space.
Yeah, I have some questions. You presented this data to your board. What was their response?
The board is seeing growth and seeing new leadership and, um, seeing growth.
Okay, so I, we asked three things. Um, one, that your kids come to class, two, that they learn, three, that they're on time to graduate. Ten percent of your students are attending ninety percent of the time, ten percent. Your ELA scores are down, your graduation rate still is abysmal. Um, I'm not comfortable with where that is. Uh, the reason I'm not comfortable and is because the Phoenix School is bringing down the Roseburg Public School graduation rate. Okay, you spend more per student and your numbers are far, far worse. Um, you talk a lot about the contract, but the contract was set up for, to measure those three things. Okay, um, presenting data that the board didn't ask for screams obfuscation to me. Okay, and that, that's frustrating on my part, and I am only speaking for me. Um, and I, I just, there's minimal, minimal growth, you know? Going from seven point six to ten percent of your students tend ascending ninety percent of the time. That is still terrible. I mean, I, and I understand COVID, but everybody's dealing with COVID. Uh, I need more. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Uh, the, the work presented data that requested.
I, I don't care as much about what other schools are doing. Okay, I care more about what Phoenix is doing. And I, I don't care about the comparison to other schools. I care about the comparison to, I want to know what your graduation rate is. I want to know how many kids are taking tests, how many kids are going to school? Those are the things that, that, that are, are measured across every school system and, uh, you're not doing well.
I understand your remarks and I appreciate them. Um, the presentation here again was meant to highlight the contractual mechanisms and man review as they take about a contract. I do believe that the quarterly presentations every month do provide rich data. And if, if you need to chat offline to help with those other quarterly presentations, please, I would like to bring the data that is desired by this body so we can grow and learn together. I am hearing your remarks that we are less than. Um, I do believe I have a staff that
Not less than. I think less than can be misconstrued that, that the individual is, it, it's a worth issue. No, you're just not performing at the level desired. I don't think you're less than. Does that make sense? I just want that to be crystal clear that I'm not saying you're less than. I'm saying you're not performing at the level that is desired.
That, that, that's understandable. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, this is Lori Newton from the board. May, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, this was data from twenty-one, twenty-two. And so as the board of, of, of Phoenix, we kind of expected this data. We were very, very concerned about, um, a performance last year. And so what, what we were looking forward to is this year's data, because this year we saw a lot of new improvements, a lot of cohesionness with the staff.
And that will be out after, after graduation this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the other question?
Real quick, um, you said the percentage of students that took the, the test this year was, he was eighty-two or eighty-six, something like that?
Eighty-two percent this year. We're, and that, we actually had a hundred and sixty-two students take the assessment. Um, but we have students leave at the beginning of the year. So at the student body that we have right now, eighty-two percent has tested at least.
I'm, I'm just trying to remember from the last year was something that was like forty percent?
That was forty individuals.
So what was that? Uh, well, I just wanted to say congratulations on that because, I mean, obviously there's still some work to be done, but I mean, that's, that's a growth that we can see. And it was one of the first things we talked about was you guys aren't testing the kids. So how can we know what's going on? We don't have, but you guys are eighty-two percent is a large increase. So congratulations on, on getting a start anyway.
I want to make sure this board knows, I heard loud and clear about that, and we have made some critical decisions to make some critical improvements. And, and please let us know, but I do believe our principal now sees this as an integral part of the contract and is delivering.
It's absolutely a work in progress. So, and I look forward to, um, sharing with you the progress that we're making on, in this year and the different, um, areas that, uh, like I, when I brought my, uh, improvement plan, being able to go over that with you guys next time on where we're at with those goals.
So, uh, you said that, um, the other thing I remember bringing up is the attendance and, and getting, we can't test kids that aren't there.
Right.
So more emphasis on that. Can you tell us like from the last time we spoke with you, uh, what you have been doing? Cause that still is so low. Uh, to, about getting kids there.
You know, it's, it's been, uh, definitely a challenge since the last time that we spoke. There's been a lot of, um, things that have been going on with, um, holidays and such, but what we've been doing is we've been connecting with the parents. We've been connecting, um, with the students, trying to figure out what their barriers are to getting to school. Uh, we have a wellness coordinator that's working with the kids as well, um, doing a lot more check-ins with them. And just finding ways to address that, those issues that are causing them not to attend. Uh, frequently there's issues of anxiety or parents don't feel like school is important lately. So we have to really change that narrative with the parents. Um, sometimes the kids, um, they're just not showing up because they don't see value in it and they don't have goals. So we're really working on trying to find students, find goals for students, find, uh, what, how are we going to engage them? So really change that narrative from, I don't need this, I don't care to, I, I need to get there because I have something to do. So it's a, it's definitely work in progress, but part of it is identifying the problem. And that's the first step, just like testing these students as well, figuring out, you know, where they're missing i- in their math skills and where they're missing with their English skills. We can't develop or find a cure until we figure out what we're looking at. And so we, we really are in that development stage where we're just like, what is the problem? Doing the research, trying intervention, seeing what works and what doesn't work, then we're not going to use anymore. So we'll keep you updated on, you know, what's working. Um, but it's still really just in the, the beginning stages.
Cause we definitely want it to work, you know, we're, these are our kids in our area and so we are concerned. So it's not like we're trying to, um, throw daggers at you. But there's, uh, once you've identified what the problems are in getting them there, you know? I hope you have some people that are creatively working on, you know, uh, whether it's some kind of incentives, you know, maybe a rally or, you know, a motivational speaker or, or somebody that can, you know, spark the kids to want to be there. Um, so just hoping that, you know, if, if you can wo- work harder now that you see the problems, you know, some ideas now to go from here.
Yeah. So just really quick, and I know that we don't have a lot of time. I'm just gonna throw out some of the things that we're trying. We're doing a wellness fair in April where we're bringing different, um, individuals in the community that that can connect parents and students with, um, healthy habits, healthy eating, our garden. We were expanding our farm to school program. We're expanding our, um, our other pathways programs to try to find ways to get those kids to get engaged in their pathway. So we really have some exciting things coming up. And it's really about connecting and plugging those kids into those programs.
Ladies and gentlemen, ten minutes have expired. I want to thank you for, back in, taking our time to come get you with it tonight. We look forward to our work session in May, June, or, or twenty-twenty-three, uh, to, uh, continue the progress in communicating in a manner that is understandable by all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My item on the agenda is the, uh, strategic plan investments presented by Assistant Superintendent Michelle Me and Melissa Roberts.
Right. All of you have a copy of the presentation in your packets and we will, we will make it brief. Um, we are here tonight to share with you some of the care and support and efforts and investments that we're providing to our students to provide care and support, um, for, so our students can successfully access and engage in their instruction. This is tied directly to, um, the board strategic plan that we're providing, um, care, support and instruction for all of our students. So they can become their most successful people selves in the future. And so we're just going to share some pieces with you and I'm going to turn
And so we're just going to share some pieces with you and I'm going to turn it over to Melissa for the next slide.
So we have a very important goal for every student. And that is to provide them the opportunity and the learning environment so they can grow into caring, responsible, productive citizens. So embedded into their everyday living in school, we have behavior management lessons and also we have our social emotional learning. And so through that, we hope to develop skills with our students in their self-awareness, understanding their own feelings and how their body reacts to things which increases their self-management, their ability to control and to work in relationships which will build their social understanding, hopefully building perspective and understanding other people's views on things which will then lead to relationship skills, being able to develop friends and then also responsible decision-making. So we do practice role-playing and skills so that there's research that says when students have answers before something hits them, they'll be more likely to make better decisions.
Thank you. Right. We included the investments that we are currently making in care and support in the district. And on your slides, I added in parentheses for you the funding sources for each of these supports. And we have invested in our social emotional learning coordinator who is Mrs. Vindi Indicott, who's providing K-12 social emotional support. She provides professional development. She goes in and does modeling in classrooms. She works with our CDS teachers and our skills trainers and just providing that district support. We've invested starting this year in weekly social emotional learning lessons for from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, so elementary through high school. And we have our child development specialists in our elementary schools. So these are CDS teachers. We have one full-time CDS in each of our elementary schools. They provide lessons to our students, social emotional skills as well as really all of those relationship pieces and the pieces that Melissa we're talking about was talking about in the previous slide. They work, they do cold class, small group, and they also work with individual students on choices, behaviors, and just providing supports. We have counselors in our secondary schools. They help with scheduling, but they do much more than that. They're providing the also that emotional and social and behavioral support for our students. They're there in times of crisis. And many of our students go to them just when they need someone to talk to. We are currently strengthening our partnership with Adapt. And we are at or very close to having a therapist in every single one of our buildings, which is a vast improvement from where we were last year. And we have our school psychologists. They do testing for our students for various things, cognitive testing, psychological testing, but they also provide crisis support. So they are part of the response team in the event we need to do and a crisis plan or do an evaluation on a student that may be in crisis at that time.
Do we have any of those positions still open?
Yes.
How many do we have open?
Two.
Thank you.
And and we also have the our skills trainers, which we have one in each elementary school and one in each of our middle schools that are also providing behavioral support. They go into classrooms to provide support. They pull students to do one-on-one support for them and provide overall support for the school.
In continuing, we also have teachers on special assignment, both in the Office of Student Services and also in our teaching and learning. So we have staff at elementary level that are part-time or full-time, and then staff also at our middle and high school levels. These staff members help monitor. Actually, they help model and help also infuse some of the instruction that's occurring. We have our conscious discipline strategies, which is K through five strategies we use to help students with behavior management. But there's also pieces that dive into community and also parenting classes. So we build that connection and what we're doing at school also with home. We have positive behavior interventions and supports as one of our guiding practices to make sure that we're addressing behavior in a proactive way. And we are also modeling and supporting the behaviors we want to see from others. We have behavior as behavior support team, which is a collaboration of three individuals between the Office of Student Services and our Teaching and Learning Department. And the small little team is growing to go out into the buildings. They help supervise, sometimes observe, and then provide strategies and support and modeling for staff working with students that may not have those management skills under toe yet. We have our district office support in addition to professional learning such as our suicide screening, our suicide instruction and our prevention supports as well as crisis prevention training. And we actually have a training coming up this spring to help with threat assessments, and that'll be an option not only for staff within our buildings, but our administrative staff. And then we have some special programs which would include our Horizons program for foster education students and then our educational center for our students that may be in the works of some type of disciplinary actions, but this is a place where they receive more individualized support in a smaller learning environment. They're receiving that instruction and the hope is that they return back to their home schools, proud and ready to be learners.
Thank you, Melissa. Any board members have any questions for us?
Just comment. I'm impressed here. Phoenix was talking as I was reading. One of the things we're trying to do is to improve attendance and performance by improving the strength of the cohort sense among the kids. Because I have the impression that kids don't learn very well if they're not comfortable at school and not comfortable with their classmates. And if they don't have an identity, not just with the building, but with the kids they're used to going to school with. All of these tools that you're talking about here seem to me to be along that line of helping to nurture the comfort of the kids and their ability to form those relationships with their classmates. So that makes sense to me that those are useful things to I hate I keep having this image of all of you school district employees being like sheepdogs running along, trying to keep the kids all together in a flock. And I appreciate that. And and that's all teaching is learning to read and learning to write, learning to do arithmetic. But all this other stuff is necessary to make it easier for kids to do those substantive things. So I'm I'm impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was getting a little bit nervous because nowhere, I think there's one spot where it mentions parents. And and I was really glad when you spoke last, talked about parents because many of these kids that we're dealing with, you know, we want to make sure that school is the best part of their day. And then you aren't going to be able to give me this percentage and we can get off the record, but I'd be curious to know what percentage of our little ones, that's just not little ones, but have no parent involvement. I bet it's pretty high. And gosh darn it, until this world stops, it's the adults, in my opinion, and I'm going to get in trouble, but I don't care. Fire me. Until the adults start acting like adults and getting along with one another. I don't care what side of events. I mean, everything has to be political. Right? I mean, this is crazy. Till adults start growing up and having conversations with each other that are acceptable, you know, you can disagree at the end, but in a nice way, we're going to have this problem. And and we're spending a lot of money. But we have to. But sometimes I think maybe the money might be spent on the adults. You know, these these kids come to school and we wonder why they act out. They don't have parents. They may have a guardian that's 18 years old. A little kindergartner has an issue once a week and bad. She's in one of those awful. I hate to call them tantrums. I don't know what the word is nowadays. Last 45 minutes. This true story. Last 45 minutes after 40, you know, there's two behavior specialists in the room trying to and after 45 minutes, this little baby just lays down and goes to sleep. She has nothing when she leaves that school. And it starts all over the next day. So I'm on my soapbox, but gosh, parents have just got, or adults have just got to and I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but
We continue to work on our parent engagement activities to bring our parents in and
It's difficult, isn't it?
It it can be. It we're getting better at it. And the parenting classes, we just started our parenting classes, our conscious discipline ones. Mindy Endicott is providing those classes and we had our first one at Sunny Slope and I believe we had about 15 families that came, which is and and they but they had to agree to sign up for a series. So there's five classes. So they had to commit to coming to all of them. So.
Kids should be able to go home without their parents freaking out on them and feel comfortable to talk to their moms and dads.
Agreed.
And it should be their moms and dads that are schools should be teaching reading, writing, arithmetic, that good stuff. Parents should be teaching the humanistic type side of things, in my opinion, but it is not happening. That's what I was thinking. We have care. We have enlisted care, support, and then instruction. And I was thinking instruction is what we're supposed to be doing, but these other two things
Have to be played.
Done at home in years past. They it was just anticipated or expected that it would take place at home and then they come to school to be taught. But, you know, we've had, I mean, it is what it is. Now we can't really teach them very well because they don't have the care and the support first, you know, to to get so as as much as we are spending a lot of money you know, and we are investing a lot, but it it's not, it it is what it is. We have to do it. And these are, you know, I think our programs that that we're involved with are are just critical, you know, we we can't expect great in instruction and great grades and great everything unless we do provide some some semblance of that foundation. So I appreciate what you do on your on your part.
Thank you.
I think my microphone going on and off. I appreciate the effort that Thank you. I appreciate your effort. Assistant D and Mrs. Roberts, we thank you for your time and your hard work to do this. We're going to adjourn our work session. I want to thank everybody who came to attend both on Zoom and in person. We will take a three and a half minute break and then we reconvene in executive session. Thank you very much. We're going to review, we convene a regular session. At this time, the chair will entertain entertain a motion to extend a superintendent's contract for another roll a year. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Our second.
It has been moved in second that we extend superintendent's contract for another year. I would like to make a brief statement that will be part of the press release. I wrote it down, so I know what I'm saying. It's an honor for me to share that our community on behalf of the school board, that our superintendent, Jerry Gordon, performed with high marks this past school year. Superintendent Gordon's proactive approach to problem solving, his ability to listen to the board and his coworkers has given the board the confidence to extend his contract for another year. We, the board, developed a strategic plan for all of the employees of the Roseburg District to follow. And I'm happy to share with all a job well done. This is not only an individual assessment, but an assessment of the district as a whole. We have fully dedicated team of classified licensed and administrators who are focused as one to provide the best for our students. Thank you very much for your support. With that being said,
If we get a person saying to begin
We did, we got a first thing, we just think about.
For the vote, although the favor is the I.
I.
A opposed. If motion carries, with the record show. There is no other business before the regular session. There's no more business with the executive session. Our next regular board meeting, regular board meeting will be March 8, 2023 at Green Elementary School. There will only be one session in the month of March due to spring break. We ask that you have a great time. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.